All right. Good evening and welcome to Maple Plain City Council Meeting. It is Monday, January 23rd. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
Mayor and City Council, could I just add one item under consent agenda? Approved settlement agreement between John Hassel II and the City of Maple Plain.
Thank you. That has been added. Looking for a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the addition. Oh, no, I'm not, just kidding. We are going to start with Senator Dave Osmik. If you'd like to come forward to the mic, please.
Mayor, can we just get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? That's all right. We're getting there.
Consent agenda, agenda. All right. Sorry. Looking to adopt the agenda.
I move that.
DeLuca?
I second.
Second. All right. Thank you. All right.
Oh, gotta take the vote.
Take a vote.
Yes, all in favor. I'm all blessed. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Now, moving on, we welcome Senator Dave Osmik.
I think I see a couple new cases. So, please have the wrong address.
Oh.
But it's all I got.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you. This is my 2016 visit. Sorry, I didn't visit you last year. I missed six cities. You were one of them. I just ran out of time, but you are the last of the cycle that I need to catch up on. I do this.
You actually did come to us last year.
Did I come to you last year?
Yeah. I'm glad you forgot.
Well, I remember the one. No, I remember the one.
That was the one.
Was it 60 years?
It was.
Oh, then I'm mistaken.
Everyone's looking at me.
Ah, but I remember it. Well, we'll argue about that one. For the new people, I hope you enjoy your time. I had 11 years on the Mount City Council and enjoyed it before I moved on to the Senate. I hope you find it rewarding as I did. Good to see you tonight. Just wanted to stop by, say hi, bring up a few things. Of course, first thing on the list of things to do always when I'm out on Highway 12 is talk about the Highway 12 safety money, which we successfully had in every single bill in the legislature last year. What is happening tomorrow is the Senate is going to actually in capital investment, which I am now a member of capital investment for the next two years. We are taking up a bonding bill and we are probably going to be passing something on Thursday. I can't tell you exactly what we're passing, but it's going to look very similar to what we passed last year multiple times. As you know also, if you've been paying attention to how things work at the legislature, any Senate, any bill that originates in the Senate for bonding is not a bill. It is more of a statement. What we will do is pass it, put it aside, and wait for the House to send us their version of a bonding bill, and then either pass theirs, match it up, or whatever we're going to do to pass it out of the legislature. I'm optimistic we're going to have a bill, the governor's proposal for bonding, which was actually significantly more than I'm comfortable with, did not include Highway 12. And multiple times now, I have expressed to the Department of Transportation leadership and to the governor's staff that there will be bonding, there will be Highway 12 in any bonding bill that comes through the state of the legislature this time. And I expect him not to veto, line item veto. That is one of the dangers. He has said that he does not want to have what are called earmarks. Well, the whole bill is full of earmarks. Everything that we've done, I mean, the governor's proposal included highway earmarks for 494, earmarks for 35W, earmarks for the Stone Arx Bridge, earmarks for the Minnesota Zoo. There's a lot of earmarks, and this is one of them that I think is important, and so does the legislature. So, we will fight to make sure that that stays in the process. I was very happy with the election results. You were actually the first city on that election night that came in, and I was so happy to see what the numbers looked like. But I'm very happy with the results, and I'm actually very happy to be in the majority, which was a surprise to me. I am now the Chair of the Energy and Utilities Committee for the State Senate, so I get to learn a lot about electricity that comes through. We are working on a number of initiatives to make energy less expensive to not only the residential customer, but also businesses, and you would qualify under that segment. You spend a lot of money on streetlights, and you spend a lot of money on your own electricity to have an operation. We're looking forward to trying to reduce the rates that you're actually impacting you. I'm also on the Transportation Committee again this year. I tried to get off of it, but Senator Newman would not let me leave. But I do enjoy being on transportation along with my other duties, and again, I'm on capital investment, and I'm also on local government operations, which of course impacts you directly. We will be doing some Met Council reform, we hope. I have proposed a number of Met Council reforms already. One of them is probably going to pass. It's called split terms, so that the governor actually will appoint Met Council representatives. First two years, he gets to appoint half; the second two years, he gets to appoint the other half of them, so that they actually have more continuity. There's another, a number of other bills I'm working on right now. My Digital Right to Repair Bill to let small businesses be able to flourish in Minnesota is another initiative I'm working on. But we're looking at a lot of different changes here in Minnesota, and with a Republican House, Republican Senate, and a governor that's a Democrat, there is going to be compromise. And I understand that. I've actually had to already vote for things that I didn't necessarily think were exactly right. But when you're, you are now in the majority, you have to actually pass things and be responsible. Not that I was irresponsible before, but you have to be responsible for passing budget bills and keeping the operations of the state of Minnesota operating. So, with that, I don't want to take all your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? I would like to personally thank you for becoming one of the biggest advocates of the Highway 12 Safety Coalition, and appreciate you coming to the meetings, making it a priority, advocating for us out in the West, and stepping up.
Well, thank you. And as I was here last time, we got, we found out that there was a communication issue, and that was resolved. And I think we've done a great job, and I don't take all the credit. I take credit from where it's due, and really, it's the advocates that are more important because they came down, your chief came down to make sure that everybody knew what that was. And we're still working on it. It's a work in progress. I'm very optimistic that we're going to find it. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your partnership and your help. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. Now, if you do have any questions, my email is accurate. My phone number is accurate on the card. The correct address is 95 University Avenue, Office Number 2107. But obviously, if there's anything that you folks need, you know where to get ahold of me, and if there's a reason for me to come to a City Council meeting, just give me a call.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the addition, as noted earlier.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
All in favor? Any discretion? All in favor?
I second it.
Yep.
Oh, my gosh. All of us. Same sign. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. All right. Administrative reports. We'll start with the City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Attached in your packet is my monthly engineering report, and some of the major items that we worked on since the last meeting would be various punch list items and record plans for the Bud Avenue improvements. We also dealt with some, or we also contacted, excuse me, the appraisers working on the special benefit analysis. It sounds like that information should be coming in around February 3rd, 2017. And if you remember from the last public hearing, once we get that information in on those additional properties, we'll distribute those to the council and then set up another public hearing for the project. Well, number four, it's, you know, we worked with the attorney, City Attorney on various questions with the contracts, and we've sent the notice to proceed to the contractor. We'll probably give you an update on their schedule at one of your upcoming meetings. Earlier tonight, we talked a little bit about the Heritage Museum and some of the footing work and discussions with the contractor. We know that's going to be coming back to your February 6th work session, and various other miscellaneous items for this last month. So, we can answer any questions this time from the council on our monthly engineering report.
Any questions for our engineer?
I have two quick questions.
All right.
One has to do with Bud Street. The other one has to do with Proto Labs. There were two things still left open on a punch list, so to speak, for those two projects. One was a wetland replacement plan, banking credits that's to go to Bowser.
Yes. So, we got contacted by Bowser here recently that they need to have some information related to the final application. I think we're checking in with staff if a check was processed, and we'll be getting back to the watershed with that information.
Okay. And then a operations and maintenance agreement on the biofiltration basin for the Proto Lab project?
Sure. Yes. Part of the work that Proto Labs was doing, they have to submit an operations and maintenance agreement. I know one of the things that we talked about under our miscellaneous is that there still is some work. They, you know, they kind of seeded everything late in the year, and so we'll look at that this spring. So, I'll double check on the status of that operation and maintenance agreement if they've signed it.
Yep.
And sent, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for engineer?
I move to approve the engineering report as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you. City Planner, turn it over to you.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. The monthly report for December and January, December 2016, January 2017. Planning, worked on a couple of projects, one that you'll be hearing later in this meeting tonight. We attended the January Planning Commission meeting to present a revised request from the Total Auto Sales for the variance that is going to be before you tonight. Also, as related to staff meeting, we had several staff meetings. Couple of the items that we're working on from a staff level would be downtown redevelopment. We're continuing to pursue another developer on the downtown redevelopment project, and as I know council's aware, we met with another developer last week on that, and so we continue to work on that. We're also looking at some redevelopment on the MPFC site, and we're going to continue to pursue a lead that we had on that site as well. We're working with the seller of that site. They just recently completed a wetland delineation for that property, and we forwarded that information on to an interested party. Outside of that, we're, we've been talking as a staff on the comprehensive plan process and kind of gearing that up for a future meeting with the council and to start talking about that process and what it's going to look like. And then we've continued to look at conditional use permits and their enforcement within the city. As council knows, there's a couple that we've been working on for quite some time, and we also are just doing an overview of some of the other ones that are out there and trying to get those into compliance. We've sent a compliance letter actually to an additional user just recently, trying to work on compliance with their site over in the industrial park. Outside of that, I continue to have a ton of questions on the 1675 Spring Avenue vacant property. I don't know if everybody's familiar, that's the one at the end of Spring Avenue, right on Highway 12. At one point, we had a dog grooming business proposed on that site. That site was purchased by that potential business owner, and they're, they're trying to sell it now as they moved into the mall at the MPFC site. So, I keep getting a lot of questions about what can I do, what can't I do on that site. Anybody who needs to do anything on that property's got to come forward to the city because we require a site plan review for all new development, as well as they're going to likely need some relief from the Highway 12 setbacks. And so, but I get a lot of people unsure then of what that means, and then they don't know if they want to take the risk to actually put a plan together and go through that process without knowing what they can or can't get. But unfortunately, that's, that's the process, so I've been trying to explain it. But I, I continue, I probably get four to five calls a month on that site, just with people, new people, thinking about what they can do on that part, particular property. So, outside of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to the planning report.
Any questions? With that, I'm looking for a motion to accept the Planner Report.
I move to accept the Planner Report as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Wes Tenepin.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, before you is the year-end activity report for West Howard Public Safety for 2016. Through the end of the year, we handled 8,713 total incidents for both cities, 3,114 in Maple Plain and 5,002 in Independence. It's an increase of 492 incidents compared to last year. We were busy. We were active, and I think the officers did an outstanding job in keeping up and keeping the proactive police work out there, and it was a great year for 2016 for us. I highlighted a few incidents within your packet. As always, I give you about 30, 35 of them, and I'll only to speak about a few. In the beginning of the month, we had kind of a rash of catalytic converters throughout Maple Plain and Independence stolen, and then we had some local businesses have some scrap metal stolen from inside. Surveillance cameras were set up by ourselves, and within a few days, one of our officers in the early morning hours noticed a suspicious person walking away from a business in Independence at Highway 12 and 90. Contact was made with the driver and his vehicle as it was parked in a cemetery. The back of the vehicle was full of radiators and other metal scraps. He was in possession of a Solzall. All of those cues and evidence led us to believe he was the person that was responsible for stealing most of the scrap metal within our city. That was confirmed, and that person is being charged for various thefts and without the City of, within the City of Maple Plain and Independence. On December 2nd, we had a personal injury crash, Highway 12 and County Road 90. This is not a typo, as you read it. I want to be clear that we talk about this one. So, a 39-year-old driver from St. Bonnie was at 90 and Highway 12 in an attempt to cross Highway 12. As he went to do so, he pulled out in front of a vehicle, he quickly stopped, realized traffic was too heavy, so he backs up, and boom, he backs up into the person behind him that he didn't see, so then we kind of got that rear ender backup crash. They pull over, they exchange every information. Everything's fine. He then leaves to cross Highway 12 and gets hit again as he crosses the highway, and he was not having a good day. The third person involved in the vehicle was transported to the hospital. Yeah, I know. On December 11th, we did have a fourth degree DWI arrest at Highway 12 and County Road 92 in Independence. An 85-year-old male from Lester Prairie submitted to a breath test after his vehicle went in the ditch, and he tested a .14 at the time. On December 21st, we had an interesting case. There's a little bit more to it than what I typed, so I'll kind of fill you in. So, we had a texting while driving case at Highway 12 and Baker Park Road in Maple Plain. It is not uncommon for officers to sit at that intersection and watch people text away while they're stopped at the red light. People should know by now, because we've talked about it, it's been in the news, you cannot use your phone to text while you're sitting at a red light. That is illegal of using electronic device. So, this particular 17-year-old girl from Independence was stopped at the light texting. The officer actually got out of their squad, stood outside the passenger door of the vehicle while she's at the red light, and looks at her, and she doesn't notice. He finally knocks on the window and says, "You need to put your phone down. You can't be doing that." Pull over. So, she pulls over, the officer gets in his squad, he pulls up behind her. Now, she's on her cellphone and wouldn't get off the cellphone from making a personal call during the traffic stop. So, the 17-year-old was also under a provisional driver's license where that they're not supposed to use their cellphones at all while driving. So, the father of the 17-year-old was contacted, and then she was issued a citation for the offenses. On December 22nd, we did have in the 5500 block of Joy Street, Maple Plain, that a resident reported that their unlocked vehicle had been gone through. Nothing was taken, but it was obvious somebody had been rifling through, looking for stuff to steal. This is not uncommon, and I can tell you from experience, and in this particular case, if we simply could get everybody to lock their doors, the rate of miscellaneous theft within people's vehicles that are parked overnight would not occur. Very rarely, if ever, do they actually break the window or use any tools to gain entry into your vehicle. They simply go around, unlock the door, unlock, go into the vehicles that are unlocked and start digging through it. Same with a lot of our burglaries around the area. They go for easy opportunities, and when you leave your vehicle unlocked, it's easy to get in. So, I encourage all of our residents to lock up their vehicles at night or during the day as well. On December 23rd, we had a third-degree DWI in the 6400 block of Hills Road in Independence. I bring this one up because this ended up being a short police pursuit with this particular individual. A person had called saying that there's somebody at the end of their driveway, a male standing in the, in their yard, looking at their camper. The camper wasn't for sale. It was very odd for that person to be looking at their camper, so they called the police. We went to stop the, the male. He did stop. We made contact with him. He presented a driver's license. The officer immediately noticed that he had been drinking, odor of alcoholic beverage, and he left. He took off. And so, then we proceeded red lights and sirens for about three miles before the person finally decided to give up, since he already given us his driver's license, we know who he was, and his breath results was a .2, .20 alcohol concentration. He was charged with third-degree DWI and felony fleeing. December 27th, we unfortunately had a very sad call in the 1800 block of Newport Street, where a coworker had requested the police to check on a coworker there because they had not came to work for a couple of days. Access into the apartment was obtained, and we did find a 64-year-old female deceased in, in the residence. So, the medical examiner came out, we did not find anything that was suspicious in nature, and the person had passed away. And then on December 30th, on the 5500 block of Bryant Street, Maple Plain, one of the employees left their iPhone on the cart in the hallway unattended at this business, and when they came back to their cart, somebody had stolen their iPhone, and this case is under investigation. Couple of other things in regards to what we have going on, besides the activity report, we're really promoting our Citizens Academy this coming February 16th through April 6th. It's an eight-week course for our citizens not to become police officers. It's for our citizens to come see what police officers do and have a better understanding and relationship between the community and the police. All of you that are new to the council, you have been given personal invites that you will see in your mail coming soon, and I would highly recommend that you attend the course. It's a very fun course. I know it's a scary amount of time, eight weeks, three hours a night. It's 7:00 to 10:00 PM, but once we get you there, I think we can convince everybody to stay, and it's a very fun time for both the citizens and the officer. And I said this to Dave before he come in in regards to Highway 12. As we move forward, we simply need the money. We can talk and talk and talk, and we all, we have great ideas. We know what needs to be done. It's all about funding, and even MINDOT would say that to you. They're ready to go, they want to go, but our state legislature needs to find through a bonding bill to get us the money to get the funding completed. So, having said that, that's our activity report for the end of the year. I do have some Citizens Academy pamphlets with me, and I would answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for the chief?
What kind of advertising did you do for the Citizens Academy?
So, we do a couple of different things. So, we, we just did it this week or end of last week. So, we mail out flyers to every one of the local churches, and then each, and has a letter in it there. We bring it to the fire station for the poster for the fire station as well, both cities. And then this week, I'm having reserves. We have a nice little business letter that's put together with a, with one of these pamphlets, and we have our reserves go to every business in town, at least most businesses, give them a letter and a pamphlet and encourage them, or if anybody, if they could display it for us. And also, then we try to put it in the paper as well. It's on our website. We posted on Facebook last Friday, so, and then I'll be asking Bobby to see what we can do for your side.
That'll be a good turnout for that one.
Last year was our best turnout we've ever had. I think we had 15 people. It's about the max amount we probably want to take, and it was a great class. It was a great class, so.
Any other questions? All right. Looking for a motion to approve the West Tenepin December monthly report?
I will make a motion to accept the West Tenepin December report as given. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Public Works January monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This month, Public Works has been busy. They've been doing some snow plowing and clearing throughout the city as necessary. To note, so far this year, they've used 45% of their salt inventory for streets and de-icing for this season. They've also been working to obtain bids for the Heritage Museum construction needs. It's a multiple-step project that we've talked about. Also, there's a lot of bids that have been working on trying to obtain there. They also, we had a minor incident at Rainbow Park where we had some frozen pipes. Luckily, nothing, none of the pipes burst or anything along those lines, but we did have a minor, I think we had one park faucet that was a little, that needs some repair. So, that might need to be replaced, but other than that, we dodged a bullet there, so that's good. And then we've, Public Works has also been gathering some quotes to replace the roof at well number one. So, that's experiencing some, experiencing some leaks at this point. It's, it's time where we would normally replace that to keep that going. If we were to do that work, we'd come back to you guys with that too, so you guys know what's going on. And then also, they've been working with StanTech to reduce the chemical costs at the water treatment plant. So, some good projects there. Be happy to answer any questions Mayor Council may have regarding the Public Works report.
Any questions? All right. Looking for a motion to approve the Public Works January monthly report.
I make a motion. We accept the Public Works report as given.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. All right. And our City Administrator, month report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This month, administration has been busy. We attended the December Police Commission meeting, also attended the APMP monthly meeting discussing community surveys, and this may come into effect later on as we continue to move forward with bringing to City Council our comprehensive plan. That might be an option that we talk about moving forward potentially, looking at a community survey there. We also had administration attended a meeting with surrounding communities regarding the organic solutions, compost services that Randy Sanitation offers, and that's to recycle those foods that you have. Those are organic and can be composted within your own home, and there is a service that Randy's does provide for all the residents here in town. And staff was out and attended some business visits with the West Tenepin Chamber of Commerce. We're currently working on end-of-year reporting for a variety of different institutions. And this week, we had Abdo Ikenmeyer's out to complete our annual pre-audit process, and we will be completing our actual audit process on the 30th and 31st of January here. And as I mentioned before, we have a number of different departments, not just administration, that we're beginning to plan and organize for the comprehensive plan updates that are required, and we're reviewing various ordinances to update for consistency and efficiency within our city code. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have on the administration report.
Any questions? All right. Looking for a motion for the City Administrator's January monthly report?
I move we approve the City Administrator's report as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Before we open up the public hearing, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, our Planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Just make sure it pops up. The item before you tonight is a request by Total Auto Sales for a variance to allow a, to allow reduced setbacks from the parking space dimension sizes, the aisle dimensions, and just general parking setbacks for the property located at 5330 Highway 12. This item originally was heard before the Planning Commissioner, before the Planning Commission at their November 2016 meeting, and the Planning Commission reviewed the requests, ultimately made a recommendation to approve the request to the City Council subject to a list of conditions and criteria. Most notably, the Planning Commission established what they thought were reasonable setbacks Most notably, the planning commission established what they thought were reasonable setbacks from the property lines, reasonable parking space sizes, and then reasonable drive aisle width. So they set those, or prescribed these various conditions by which they thought the applicant could then still have some reasonable use of this property. One of the conditions was they had to put together and draw out a scaled site plan, which we did not have when we initially met with the planning commission. We had a site plan, but it wasn't really to scale, and it didn't provide them with enough detailed information. The applicant went back to their engineer, had them prepare a scaled site plan based on the prescribed setbacks from the planning commission. And when they got that back, they noted that the prescribed plan would allow for approximately 12 parking spaces. So the applicant came forward to staff and said, "We'd like to," "We'd like to talk to staff about the plan that the planning commission gave us parameters for." It allows for 12 parking spaces. And you can see, this would be the plan that was prepared based on the initial planning commission recommendations. Those recommendations were that the applicant would maintain a 10-foot setback from the Highway 12 right-of-way line, which is this setback here. That they would maintain a five-foot setback from the west property line, a 10-foot setback from the north property line. And then in the location along the east property line, essentially from the existing curbed island, which is here, to the north, they would allow a zero lot line setback as there's some existing trees and some other vegetation already separating that area from the adjacent property. So these were the, oh, I'm sorry, and the last provision is that they maintain a 12-foot access aisle around the perimeter of the building. That access aisle was not prescribed by the fire department. It was prescribed by the planning commission. Fire department stated that an eight-foot wide area would be wide enough to accommodate their needs as related to fighting a fire specifically, because they noted they could not get fire trucks into the site regardless of what that aisle or width would be. And so the planning commission recommended that there be a drivable path around the perimeter of the building, and that was determined to be 12 feet at a minimum width in order to accommodate that. So this was what was prescribed at the November meeting. Upon receiving this plan, the applicant came back, approached the city, said, "We don't think we can live with the number of spaces that this plan yields based on the original directives from the planning commission." And so they asked if they could go back to the planning commission and, with this plan now, and seek a, some sort of additional relief from those setbacks. And so in January, the planning commission re-reviewed the request at that meeting, and they made some modifications based on the request of the applicant. What the planning commission looked at then at the January meeting is they maintained that the 10-foot setback located along US Highway 12 would need to be maintained. That was a recommendation from West Hennepin Public Safety relating to visibility by keeping vehicles out of that sightline area, so that cars turning out of the properties on both the west side and out of this driveway on the east side would have adequate visibility along Highway 12. So that 10-foot setback was not, was not one that the planning commission looked at to compromise on. Similarly, the west property line, they thought that there needed to be a minimum five-foot setback along that west property line to maintain some separation from the vacant lot to the west, which hasn't developed, so that the onus of setbacks doesn't solely go on to the adjacent property. Similarly, on the north side, they thought that a five-foot setback could be maintained. That is a concession that the planning commission recommended making from the original recommendation. So originally, they said 10 feet along this north property line. They, in the second review, thought that it's possible to go down to five feet. And then they also really allowed for the same no or zero property line along the east property line. In looking at it, the planning commission did note that there were two parking spaces that could be realized in this northwest, I'm sorry, southwest corner of the site, right here. And those two parking spaces were substandard from what had been considered in the original planning commission meeting. And they noted that those could possibly be vehicle display spaces for vehicles that are, you know, smaller or compact cars, or just regular cars actually would be able to fit in those spaces. So with that, ultimately, the planning commission noted that there was one exception to the 12-foot setback that they would be okay with. It's really only about a foot in this red circular area here. With this 12-foot perimeter buffer that goes around the site, they felt that a little bit of an encroachment into a vehicle display space in this northeast corner would still work. And the reason they noted that is because this whole area in the back of the building would be maintained clear. So they felt cars coming into the site, going around the site this way, making that turn, had adequate space to make that turn even with this one space being located in that location. And so with that, ultimately, they came up with 19 vehicle display spaces that would typically be sized at seven feet in width and 18 feet in length. There's the two exceptions, which would be these two spaces in the southwest corner of the site. And those would be as shown on the approved site plan. And then they felt that there would be two customer parking spaces, essentially one general customer parking space in this location here that would be maintained as an eight-foot wide by 18-foot long parking space. And then one fully compliant accessible parking space located in the front of the site at that location. That parking space would be signed and striped in accordance with applicable provisions for ADA standards. So with that, the planning commission made a recommendation to the City Council to recommend approval of this particular site plan, noting that there was a list of conditions that would have to be complied with. Those conditions are further spelled out in the staff report and in the resolution. I want to point out just a couple of things. One, you have a revised resolution on the DAS tonight. That was just an oversight. On Friday's resolution, we had intended to include one of the conditions that the planning commission made, which was to have the fine schedule. That is a schedule we've tipped, or I shouldn't say tipped. We have now used on two sites, three sites, two sites prior to this, when this would be the third site that we would use this fine schedule on. And what that fine schedule is, is a way to incentivize enforcement and make sure that the applicants comply with the conditions that are prescribed on the, whether it's a conditional use permit or in this case, a variance. And so that's the only change that was in that resolution is the addition of letter, or I'm sorry, number eight, which prescribes that fine schedule. And again, that was utilized previously on two conditional use permits that are similar in nature to this. Outside of that, there is a revised site plan on your DAS as well. And the only difference is to that site plan from the one that was submitted on Friday is we asked to show the 12-foot perimeter buffer. And I wanted to make sure that the site plan that we actually reviewed was consistent with what was recommended by the planning commission. And the two spaces, spaces 19 and 20, which are these two spaces located in the northeast corner, those were proposed by the planning commission to be seven feet in width, not eight feet as shown on the site plan that had come with the packet on Friday. So outside of that, there was a couple other points that were made during the planning commission meeting. One was the question of whether or not the fire department had reviewed then this updated plan. Fire department has reviewed this updated plan and given approval to the plan. There was a question on whether or not a plow truck could be parked behind the building in this location here. Fire department and staff have recommended that no, cannot be parked in that location. They want to maintain the building perimeter as clear from vehicles. And so there is no condition, and it's not shown on this plan, to accommodate that. So the site plan would be as shown or as provided in the packet and then would become an exhibit to the resolution approving this variance if the City Council were to consider that. So outside of that, those were the conditions the planning commission discussed, I think at length, both at the November meeting and the December meeting, on how this site fits into the, I guess what you'd call a surrounding landscape, and also long-term vision of the city. There was some consideration and discussion about that from the planning commission, noting that there is a historic use of this site. This isn't a new use that they're asking for. And that was part of the reason that they ultimately recommended approval in some form of a site plan that would accommodate the conditional use permit that's already on that site. They did note that this site doesn't really fit into the long-term vision of the city as a used car lot, that there are other uses in this area that are prescribed by both the city's zoning ordinance and then also the city's downtown design guidelines. But ultimately, planning commissioners made the recommendation for the plan that's shown on the screen tonight. And with that, the applicants are here. I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to the proposal or the information presented.
Shall we open the public? At this time, I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
A second.
If there's anyone here who would like to speak regarding the public hearing, at this time, you may come forward to the microphone and state your name, please. If there's anyone here who would like to come forward and speak regarding the public hearing, if you do so at this time.
I forgot how you greeted the mayor. Mayor, your honor? Honorable, I'm Gary Keller. I actually own the property. Mike Shannon is leasing it from me, and he's the one making the application. There were a few things we discussed before, and I don't know if they're on there, but they talked about striping. And they also talked to me in the last meeting about fuel tanks, gasoline tanks or whatever, petroleum tanks in the ground. I didn't take any tanks out, but they were taken out as a part of our purchase agreement. And I know they were taken out because they had a big hole there, and the tanks were gone. But I didn't pay for it. They're just gone. So that was a part of the purchase agreement. And we've got some information from Summit and Viral Services that was in charge of that, that it was done. And I mean, I didn't worry about it because I saw the tanks come out of the ground, you know. And then we do have some discharge that's monitored once a year, you know, to make sure it's safe. And that's about it that's going on now. And we get it, we send in a sample every year to Summit and Viral Services, is it, no, Legends, the Legends, and they do a test. And it says we're good to go every year. And it costs us $1,000. So if you have any other questions, but we're not going to, well, that was the other thing. We're not going to paint that right now. We need time, because you don't want to paint right now, because we want to resurface. And then we put the striping down, and that has to be done after we can resurface it. I mean, if you want to spend a lot of money, you can resurface in a minute, a little time. But I don't have any extra money. But if you guys would like to help, I'll take some. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, if I could just offer up, if their intent is to not re-stripe it now, one of the conditions is that it's re-striped. I would suggest if the council, if they were, if the council was to consider approving with the conditions in the report, I would recommend that we put a date certain then on when that would be striped, so that we'd have a way to ensure compliance. Otherwise, it would be open-ended. So if their intent is not to stripe before we grant the conditional use, that would be something we'd want to address in the resolution.
Thank you.
Just like to add one thing. John, thanks for coming out.
Please come to the mic and state your name.
John, thanks for coming out and taking a look and see kind of what, John came out today, kind of see a general overview of what the proposed plan is on there, and I appreciate that. And the only thing is, for me, as the business owner there, is that I, you know, I have, trying to comply with all, you know, the city, what the city wants and stuff like that. I certainly understand that. But I also have other requirements through other avenues, like the state of Minnesota, you know, as far as my licensing, which is coming up at the end of February. My only question I would have, if we, I know through the notes marked, it has the subdivision that we have to get put in. And then we also have, basically have to stripe the lot and get it approved from, if you guys approve this plan here. The only thing is, is if we get a proposal, I don't know when we can stripe the lot. That's, you know, I mean, it's springtime, you know, I don't know when they can do it, if they can, you know, if it has to be June, or I don't, I don't know. I mean, I just don't do that for a living, so I don't know. But my question is, is can we get a conditional use permit before that time if we have everything presented in and approved by, you know, the City Council? Because I got to get my license renewed at the end of February, I guess.
So Mike, your property currently does have a conditional use permit already that stays with the property. And this process is the variance process, which allows you to almost, it allows you to comply with your conditional use permit, because your current conditional use permit won't allow anywhere near the number of cars that is proposing tonight in this variance. So I'm not quite sure why you would need to redo the conditional use permit if you were to get approval from this variance tonight.
Well, I need Mark to sign off on the, you know, my licensing.
That would be able to happen if this agreement were to be approved tonight.
Okay. The only question I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Could we clarify about the fuel tank? I didn't read anything about that. I'm not sure.
I think it just came out last time.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. The first time that this was brought to planning commission in, I believe it was October. October or November. That was one of the stipulations that planning commission made, is that we have definitive proof that the fuel tanks have been removed off the site. I was given the purchasing agreement that did make note that those fuel tanks have been taken off the site. There are still, there's still an EPA testing requirement done on that site once every year, because there was some leftover petroleum still in the ground there. That testing has been conducted, to my knowledge, but I'm still waiting to get an actual test result, the last one that was done. But there is a document that shows that those tanks have been removed.
As far as the removal goes, that matter is settled?
Yep.
The planning commission just noted that there was tanks and that that should be verified that it was, and they provided that. That was actually a condition before we take it to council, is that they just verified that. So that was. On that note, too, the subdivision, that was one of the requirements in here. That application was made to the city prior to us bringing it to the City Council. So we have in hand the application and the fees for the subdivision. And really, it just, it puts the city in the driver's seat. We can process that now at our, however we want, but we can make sure that lot gets combined now with that, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I pose a question to the business owner, Mike? We approved this variance. Will there ever be a time there's more cars on that lot than what your total number is?
Will there be cars? What? No, I'm sorry.
Will there be more cars on that lot than the total number that this variance would allow?
No.
There ever be cars parked within the radius, the approximate 12-foot radius around the building?
I'd be lying if I say that never happened, like if a customer was parking there in some, you know, I can't say 100% that that's not going to happen during business.
If I came there at midnight, shouldn't be a car parked.
No, not at night, no, not after, I mean, you know, people, customers just come and they park, you know what I mean? You know, someone's in the customer parking, and they're going to look for another spot, you know, that kind of thing. So I'm not going to tell you that won't happen. I know we'll stay within the number. By the end of the day, there will only be the allotted number of cars. That I can promise you that.
And if we were to look behind the building, would we find a plow truck tucked in that little corner?
Today, yes, you would. But I'm just saying, yeah. I mean, until we get this resolved, then we got to, you know, we got to figure that out. But yeah, that's not going to be a problem.
Thank you.
But, no, I mean, I don't need, go ahead, John. No, I understand your question, Michael, so what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Councilor, may I?
It sounds as though the desire to not to stripe is not only because of the cold weather, but you plan on resurfacing the entire parking lot?
We plan on doing something to the parking lot, solid concrete.
Might reseal it. I mean, at this point, if we're going to stripe it, you might want to reseal it, that's all.
How do we go about incorporating the timeframe into the resolution?
I would say we give them, I mean, if the council was to consider that, we'd give them until, say, June 15th, something reasonable in that area, but not, I mean, we're not going to give the whole summer to do it. They have to get that striped. I mean,
I mean, weather plays a big factor, but I think if you were to say June 1st, June 15th, something like that, you'd be, you'd be able to then safely give them enough time to get that done in the spring.
I'm a proponent of the striping. It's visual identification on, on being compliant or not.
It's got to happen.
Yep.
And it's a non-negotiable, it's just we'd have to add a date if we're approving it.
Right, I mean, yeah, it would be difficult to stripe today.
Madam Mayor, related to that, may I ask a question as well?
Yes.
Do you have a plan for compliance with number seven, just below that? We're talking about application for the minor subdivision?
Yes.
Plan as to when that will happen?
Yeah. Yeah, we have that submitted.
It has been submitted.
With the fee, so we're, we're. No, we said prior to coming to council, we had to have the application.
That's mine, I own the property. And the recent, I don't have to do that subdivision work if I'm not going to use the lot, you know. But, once we got, we know that this is going to go ahead, he's happy with it, he's a good renter, then I can spend the money to get that done. But, up until now, it was never a problem. And, I mean, it isn't a problem, you just go, I think we go to Hennepin County. I got to check for the $5,000. But, I, what's that? I think, I think you have the application.
Yeah, we're, we're good on the subdivision. So, that's been submitted, that would combine this triangular parcel up here with the rest of the site. It is a process then that the city now controls, and we can complete the process. It does require a planning commission and public hearing, which will occur at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yep. The only thing that I would like to share with the City Council too, is that in an event like this, because of the existing conditional use permit that limits the exposure to the site in terms of cars, I do want to make sure that I share the flip side of the coin to this, which is, there's nothing stating that you have to expand the number of cars on site. If this is a direction that you don't want this business to operate in this manner, you have the option to not approve this as well.
I will say this much. Many hours were expended, not only current owner and less seen, but several years prior, your predecessor, your predecessor, but I was part of the planning commission. And the planning commission has spent a tremendous, tremendous amount of time and a lot of thought that, that went into this. And I just, I don't, I don't believe that this is. It works within, I'm sorry, it works within the district, and he just wants to sell cars.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further public discussion, I would move that we come out of the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
All right. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
I just did.
Who would second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there other questions or discussion? No, we just closed the public hearing. So, moving on to the new business, to consider Resolution 17 dash 0123 dash 01 regarding a variance for 5330 US Highway 12.
Well, I guess for discussion, I'm comfortable with June 15th stipulation for the stripes. Is that, I mean, it seems fair? Any other thoughts on that?
If we're going to go, if we're going to.
If, if the partial servicing and therefore the striping is not done by the date that we established, what is the penalty? What is the, what is, what is our recourse?
One of the things that we have in the variance is that fee schedule. So, it's a $300 fee, and then, I mean, you guys could almost put a timetable on that, you know, every, you know, week that it's not, you'd go up another fee level if you wanted to, or. It could be subjective, I mean, at that point, we could find them any day over, too.
Members of council, the, your remedy really runs from that all the way up to possible revocation, depending on what the violation ends up being. If there's a violation of the terms of this, you can review it for whatever remedy is you deem appropriate at that time. But, the fine schedule gives you an option short of revocation or nothing.